Good afternoon, everyone. I would like to call the Thursday, June 14th meeting of the Missoula County Board of County Commissioners to Order. Please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any public announcements, staff announcements? Seeing none, this is next part of the agenda is an opportunity for public comment on items not on today's agenda. And today we just have one public hearing, so if you have anything on your mind that you want to share that is not related to cryptocurrency mining, this is the opportunity to come up to the mic. I would ask folks in the audience to please silence your cell phones. If you haven't had a chance, sign in at the sign-in sheet at the back of the room. Please, either in this public comment period now or during the actual public hearing on cryptocurrency mining, keep your comments to three minutes or less. If you hear other folks who have said the exact same thing that you want to say, just know that we have heard that concern and I would encourage you not to be overly redundant. You can certainly still come to the mic, state your name, briefly state your position, but I would encourage you not to go on at length just reiterating what someone else had previously said. And last but not least, even here in these chambers, we try to respect the golden rule and be respectful to folks who may not share exactly your viewpoint on the issue. So with that, is there any public comment on items not on the agenda? Yes, sir, come on up.
My name is Bob Mastian. I live at 4585 Tiberius Drive. That's off Blue Mountain Road. And I was here about six months ago in mid-January to a hearing on a development in that area. And I reminded the commissioners and asked if they would consider a bike walk pathway, run pathway from the stoplight on 93 and Blue Mountain to the recreation area. It's a quarter mile up to the corner and a quarter mile to the recreation area. It's about a half mile. There was traffic, bike traffic on there. I bet 50 to 100 bikes in an hour last night. And it's just an accident waiting to happen. Thank you for your consideration of that.
Thank you, sir. Additional public comment on items not on today's agenda? Okay, seeing none. Our current claims list, and this is, this would be claims received as of May 31st, 2018 to June 8th, 2018 by the Commissioner's Office, total $509,864.11. As I mentioned, we have one public hearing today focused on cryptocurrency mining in Missoula County. And just by way of kicking things off, our job as elected officials here in Missoula County is to proactively protect public health, safety, and welfare of Missoula County residents. And by virtue of our oath of office to uphold the Montana Constitution and to promote a clean and healthy environment. Now oftentimes, elected officials, government get critiqued, and oftentimes rightfully so, for being too slow or too lethargic or moving at a glacial pace in terms of addressing issues. I think today's public hearing is an attempt to try to get in front of an issue, gather information, and learn more about cryptocurrency mining and potential regulatory measures regarding the same. This grows out of our experience of current and planned cryptocurrency mining operations in Missoula County and the experience of other communities across the nation. So as such, and as I just mentioned, we're looking for additional public comment today on the issue in order to determine a path forward. No decision will be made at today's meeting. And we will be taking public comment that we've received today via email at other meetings and mulling that over to determine a path forward. So I'd invite folks to share their thoughts today. And to begin with, we have a staff report from Jenny Dixon and Diana Minetta.
Thank you, Commissioners, everyone. My name is Diana Minetta. I'm the Energy Conservation and Sustainability Coordinator in Community and Planning Services. And I'll be presenting some information about cryptocurrency mining in Missoula County along with my colleague Jenny Dixon. Cryptocurrencies are digital currencies that are controlled through a decentralized network, not by a central entity like a government or a bank. Rather, they're managed through a public ledger called a blockchain, and transactions are verified by thousands of participants in the system who could potentially be located anywhere in the world. Bitcoin was the first cryptocurrency and remains the most widely used, though there are now more than 1,000 other cryptocurrencies as well. Most cryptocurrencies, including Bitcoin, are based on what's called a proof-of-work system. The concept of proof-of-work is that verifying transactions requires a lot of time and computational power, and that makes it very difficult to hack or alter the blockchain, and so makes the currency more secure. Proof-of-work-based cryptocurrencies involve mining, which is the topic of today's hearing. There are a few cryptocurrencies based on other systems that don't involve mining, and we won't be discussing that today. So cryptocurrency mining involves verifying transactions by adding blocks of transactions to the blockchain. Miners do this by competing to solve complex mathematical puzzles. Whichever miner solves the puzzle first is the one that gets to add that block of transactions to the blockchain, and they're rewarded with new units of cryptocurrency. This is the only way that new units of currency enter into circulation, and that's why it's called mining. One question that's come up is whether the conversation we're having today should be about blockchain processing in general rather than cryptocurrency mining specifically. So in addition to cryptocurrency, though cryptocurrencies were the first application of the blockchain, there are many other potential business applications. They can be used to record transactions and track assets in industries ranging from healthcare to insurance to finance. However, I think it's important to note that blockchains for business applications have some significant differences from cryptocurrency blockchains. So this is an example from IBM of a blockchain used for a vehicle leasing network. The nodes shown here in this blockchain, the equivalent of that in a cryptocurrency blockchain would be the miners that are verifying transaction. Here, there are participants who are invited to participate in the blockchain and verify transactions. They're not anonymous. It's not open to the public. It's not a competition to verify transactions, and there's nothing equivalent to mining involved. So at this point, we believe that the concerns related to cryptocurrency mining that we'll be talking about today simply don't apply to all blockchain processing and specifically to blockchain used for business applications. So to get back to Bitcoin mining, the system is set up in such a way that a new block is added to the blockchain and new Bitcoins enter into circulation about every 10 minutes. That's to control the supply of Bitcoins, so there aren't too many new units coming into circulation too fast. It also means that as more miners join the system and as the computational speed of their equipment increases, the puzzles that they must solve get harder and harder because otherwise they'd be solving them faster and faster and the supply would increase. So the energy used to mine Bitcoin and other cryptocurrencies is growing fast for several reasons. First, cryptocurrencies are becoming more widely used, so there's more transactions that need to be verified. Second, more miners are entering the system. And third, the mathematical puzzles that they're solving are getting harder and more energy-intensive. So for all these reasons, we're seeing energy use for Bitcoin and other cryptocurrencies increase, as is illustrated by this graph here. This graph comes from a website called Dig Economist, which is the best attempt we've seen to quantify the energy used by Bitcoin mining. And according to their estimates, the energy use has increased by more than a factor of five in the past year. Currently, the Bitcoin system, according to this graph, is using about 70 terawatt-hours of electricity per year. That's approximately equivalent to the electricity used by the entire country of Chile or to about 6.5 million U.S. households. This is another way to look at the energy question. Here, the question is how much energy does it take to process a single Bitcoin transaction? So say I were to buy a cup of coffee in Bitcoin versus using my credit card. And here, in fact, we're comparing the energy used for one Bitcoin transaction versus 100,000 Visa transactions, according to their estimates. One Bitcoin transaction uses close to 1,000 kilowatt-hours of electricity, which is about the same amount of electricity that an average U.S. household uses in a month. So what about here in Missoula County? Well, as we've noticed, Missoula County appears to be an attractive place to locate cryptocurrency mining operations, due both to our low electricity prices and cool climate, which reduces the cost of cooling the electronic equipment. Based on the information we have, we estimate that cryptocurrency mining in Missoula County currently uses as much electricity as about 1/3 of the households in the county. And I'm talking about the entire county there, including the city of Missoula, not just the incorporated portions of the county. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Jenny to talk about interim zoning.
Thank you. For the record, my name is Jenny Dixon. I'm a planner with Community and Planning Services. And I want to just pick up here discussing specifically how Missoula may be able to address this land use of cryptocurrency mining and the potential effects that it may create. During the course of this hearing and potentially other future Commissioner hearings, the county may determine that an urgent situation exists regarding cryptocurrency mining. Diana will talk in a minute about current and potential impacts that are possibly indicators of an exigent situation regarding cryptocurrency mining. The counties do have authority to regulate land use, as Commissioner Stromeyer stated, to protect public health, safety, and general welfare. And under the authority of 762206 MCA, counties can address these emergency situations where there may be unknown or adverse impacts, and they may address them using interim zoning. Let's see here, hold on a second. So portion of 762206 addresses specifically what's intended in order to determine if there's an emergency situation that exists that would warrant possibly creating, enacting some interim zoning. And I'm talking about interim zoning in this context, that the commissioners are not in a position where they want to enact that today. They want to continue to take testimony, but it is a potential in the future if they determine, again, that emergency situation exists. So within 30 working days of adopting interim zoning, and this is straight out of MCA, the county initiates a study or an investigation to verify that an emergency actually exists and identifies the facts and circumstances that constitute the emergency, the potential options for mitigating such an emergency, and the course of action that the governing body intends to take, if any, during the term of interim zoning regulations to mitigate that emergency. So if interim zoning is an avenue that Missoula County decides to pursue, staff has prepared for the purposes of this public hearing and any future public hearings on this topic, sample regulations for discussion purposes, which I will explain in a little more detail at the end of this presentation. But in summary, it is a proposed interim countywide moratorium on county, excuse me, cryptocurrency mining operations. It would be temporary, as interim zoning is by its name, up to one year, and if adopted, would be effective immediately. It would not apply to existing or what we would call vested operations in Missoula County, which we have several. However, existing operations would not be permitted to expand their activity. The duration of the interim zoning, as I said, gives the county time to verify that emergency exists, identify the impacts, whether they're known or unknown, and allows time to develop possible options to mitigate those impacts. And at that point, staff would recommend a course of action that could include either an additional year of interim zoning, if more time is needed. It could include permanent zoning, possibly with standards for review or conditions that would address those impacts generated by such an operation. Or finally, it could, the county could determine that no further action is needed and allow the interim zoning to lapse. The effects of not taking action on, of interim zoning action on this proposal, which is to establish a temporary moratorium, is that cryptocurrency mining operations could continue to locate their facilities in unzoned portions of the county without any zoning regulations and in zoned areas where these uses are allowed. Diana's going to talk about what we, what I was just going over, some of the potential, current and potential impacts of cryptocurrency mining, and then I will explain what the possible zoning, interim zoning could be. Thank you.
Thanks, Jenny. So in our preliminary assessment of this topic, we've identified five current and potential impacts of cryptocurrency mining operations in the county. Some of these are based on reported impacts in the county, and others are based on impacts that have been experienced in other parts of the country where cryptocurrency mining has grown rapidly. I do want to point out that the information that I'll discuss here is not the final word on these topics. The purpose of interim zoning, as Jenny mentioned, would be to give the county more time to do a thorough analysis of these issues and determine whether and how they should be addressed. So I'm going to go through these one at a time, starting with noise. This is a quote from the Bitcoin Market Journal, an industry publication, and I include it here just because it makes the point that the specialized computers that are now being used for Bitcoin mining are loud on their own, even just a single one of them, because they have powerful integrated fans that you can see there in the picture. So as you can imagine, if you put a few of these in your basement, or if you put hundreds or thousands of them in a big building, the noise increases proportionally. Also, the more of them you put side by side, the more likely you are to need additional cooling so that they don't overheat, which would also create noise. So this is to point out that the noise issue is not unique to a single cryptocurrency mining facility. It's not unique to Missoula County. It's an issue that can arise anywhere. And depending on the size of the facility, the building configuration, surrounding land uses, it may be more or less of a problem for the community. I also want to briefly address why noise is a concern in addition to being an annoyance to neighbors. There are well-documented detrimental health effects associated with prolonged exposure to noise. This is a policy statement from the American Public Health Association about some of the negative health outcomes associated with noise exposure, which, according to them, can include heart disease, diabetes, hypertension, hearing loss, and sleep disturbance. And because cryptocurrency mining operations typically run 24 hours a day, they do generate continuous noise, and so we believe this is an issue that may warrant further investigation. Turning now to climate change, I mentioned earlier the large energy consumption of cryptocurrency mining facilities. And that's important because globally, our energy system is the largest contributor to greenhouse gas emissions that cause climate change. That's the consensus of scientists around the world. This graph shows the sources of global greenhouse gas emissions, and you can see energy being the largest piece at 70%. Climate change is a big concern for Missoula County. We're already experiencing its impacts. And according to the Montana Climate Assessment, we can expect to see these impacts accelerate in the coming years and decades. The severity of them will depend on how much we reduce greenhouse gas emissions globally in the near term. That means reducing energy use, and it also means shifting to cleaner sources of energy. Missoula County's growth policy includes the goal shown here at the bottom, to reduce our contribution to climate change. I do want to mention that we're aware that the largest cryptocurrency mining facility in the county currently is supplied by hydropower, which does not emit greenhouse gases. So this concern does not arise with respect to that facility in particular. However, this topic and this discussion as a whole are not aimed at any specific facility. Not all cryptocurrency mining operations are powered by clean energy, and this concern is about the potential for growth in this industry in Missoula County and what that could mean for energy and climate change. So I'll briefly mention the other potential impacts we've identified. First, utility distribution system impacts. In other parts of the country, there have been significant impacts on utility distribution systems as a result of the high energy intensity of cryptocurrency mining operations, including impacts on reliability and in some cases on rates for other ratepayers. We understand from the utilities that operate here in the county that it's their policy that new customers, including cryptocurrency mining operations, are required to pay themselves for any needed upgrades to infrastructure like transmission lines or substations, so those costs are not borne by other ratepayers, and it's reassuring to know that county residents are protected in that way. However, we don't have the confidence at this point that Missoula County residents could never be affected if more and more of these large energy-consuming facilities connect to the grid in the coming years. For example, as our community grows in the coming years and decades, we presumably would have made use of any spare capacity that existed on transmission lines and substations. And to the extent that that spare capacity is used up by a few large facilities and therefore infrastructure upgrades are needed to accommodate the community's natural growth, it seems like there's a possibility that other ratepayers could be affected at that time. So we believe this is an issue worth looking into further since we are talking about potentially unprecedented growth in our electric utility system. Moving on to number four, fire safety. This is not a concern with regard to large facilities that go through the building and electrical permitting process. Those fully address fire safety issues. However, it has come up elsewhere in the country with regard to small cryptocurrency mining operations run out of a basement or a garage where the owner might not even know that they need to upgrade their wiring to accommodate their electrical load. And finally, electronic waste. E-waste contains heavy metals and carcinogens, so to the extent that cryptocurrency mining facilities use a lot of electronic equipment and turn it over relatively frequently, we believe it's important to be sure that it's recycled or disposed of safely and properly. And this is an example, there are others I could have given as well, where if the county did decide to pursue interim zoning during that temporary period, conditions could be developed that would, for example, require cryptocurrency mining operations as a condition of being permitted to recycle or handle their e-waste in a specified manner. A number of local governments and utilities in other parts of the country that are also attractive places for cryptocurrency mining have chosen to put restrictions on this industry, and some of them are listed here. And with that, I'm going to turn it back over to Jenny to talk about potential interim zoning regulations.
Thank you, Diana. So staff has prepared draft interim zoning regulations that are shown in Attachment E of the packet distributed to the county commissioners. And also, as you walked in the door this afternoon, we have some, we should have enough packets for everybody who's interested. Attachment E shows proposed zoning regulations that essentially define what cryptocurrency mining is as a land use, and then effectively establishes a moratorium on that use countywide for up to one year and would not, would also not permit expansion of existing uses. It would prohibit that use as either a primary commercial use, industrial use, or as a, what we call a home occupation, a home-based business running, running this kind of activity out of your home. We have precedents in Missoula County zoning regulations for countywide zoning. As many of you probably know, the county does not have base zoning districts countywide, just kind of in the more urban area, but we do have countywide zoning that regulates off-premise billboard signage as well as establishes a nuclear-free zone in the entire county. So there are situations and examples of that type of zoning that are, can be utilized. Zoning is a legislative act that allows the county to regulate where specific land uses can locate and under what conditions. Some examples of that that give you an idea of, you know, why does the county zone, as we've mentioned a couple times, to protect public health and safety, generally from negative land use impacts on others, and we can establish conditions that mitigate those impacts, that make it accept, at an acceptable level for public health and safety. For example, auto body shops are only allowed in certain zones, generally the higher commercial and industrial zones, so that the impacts generated by that use don't impact, let's say, schools or residences, the fumes or the noise. So when you identify a land use that maybe generates certain impacts, the county is authorized through 762202 to establish districts where certain land uses may locate and where they may not locate. The home occupation regulations in the county zoning also are an example where it provides a list of certain commercial uses that are prohibited in residential zones as home occupations. And so this is a very similar approach, which the county may or may not decide to do, but for purposes of discussion, we wanted to provide you with a draft document so that you're able to read and understand what could be discussed in future meetings with the commissioners. And with that, I think we will conclude our presentation. Thank you so much.
All right. Thanks, Diana and Jenny. So again, this is a public hearing, which I'll open. Anyone can come up to the mic. Feel free to do so. State your name for the record. Try to be as succinct as possible. Keep your comments to three minutes or less, and please address the chair. Come on up. Thank you.
Hi. I'd like to thank the county commissioners for taking the time to hear public comments on this. My name is Ryan Alter. I'm the CEO and founder of Alter Enterprise. We're a Missoula business that has been here for about 12 years. We're also an information technology service solutions provider. Over the past 12 years, I've been able to grow my company from a one-person shop to 16 plus a gaggle of interns running around. As CEO, it's my job to look at the technology field that is constantly changing and position my company for what's coming next. About a year ago, I recognized that data center support was a growth, a growth area for my market. Being an active member of the Montana High Tech Alliance and sitting on the advisory board at the Missoula College, I know it's important as a community for us to look at bringing in good high-tech jobs into Missoula. Right now, I'm creating jobs, and quite a few of them. Alter Enterprise's biggest growth area is in data center support. In the past eight months, Alter Enterprise has put half of the Missoula colleges graduating technology students through our data center support internship program. This is a big deal, because these students before were having trouble finding internships two to three years out past graduation, and Missoula College couldn't graduate those students. Many of these students have gone on to be hired at Alter Enterprise, or we facilitated finding them jobs in the data center support industry. There are many other businesses here today that want to give their perspective on how data centers have had an impact on their business. So keep my remarks short. To be clear, Alter Enterprise has provided half the graduating class internship programs. This is, this is huge. We've brought four of them on as full-time over the past eight months and found placement for several of the other ones. In addition, during the same time period, we've provided three internships for the University of Montana Management and Information Systems Program that is also helping our academic institutions. As this discussion moves forward, I simply ask you to consider that the decisions you make will have an impact on businesses and jobs, and not just for this year and next year, but this is something, as we've seen, the technology has the potential to have impacts for 20 to 30 years. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Alter.
Hi, good afternoon. My name is Julie Merritt, and I live at 305 Augusta Drive. I came today to say I support the commissioners in this interest in putting in some interim zoning. I think this is the kind of situation that clearly speaks to the need to go carefully, do some study. When you look at those numbers of how much energy this type of industry uses, it reminds me very much of the logging industry. And we all know what happened in this community. Logging was great. It provided a lot of great jobs for a lot of families for a long time. And then when all of the easy-to-get timber had been harvested, companies like Champion and moved on, and they left our families without jobs. And I just see the same thing happening here, and I hope that we can learn our lesson from the past experiences and just take the time to study this and make sure that we're not setting ourselves up for the same kinds of problems. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Merritt.
Hello, Commissioners. Mr. Chairman, thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Judy Matz. My name is Judy Mattson, and I live out in Milltown. I'm here speaking for myself and Gary Mattson, who is unable to attend today. So these are joint comments. We strongly support a moratorium on any future development of cryptocurrency facilities in Missoula County for the following reasons. First, economics, and I may have to change my idea a little bit here, given the previous speaker's comments on the technology sector, but as far as the cryptocurrency facilities, we see no added value product coming from this, and it's so therefore we don't see a benefit to the residents or the economy. Relatively few persons are employed to operate these facilities, and these are not unusual situations for businesses, many of them meet that category. However, the massive energy consumption that the cryptocurrency mining uses is a concern. And I would say to any new technology company, this, these criteria should apply. So Diana gave a really, she prob, she could have written my comments, so I'm going to be very short. Climate change is of great consideration, and everything we do needs to be measured against this. From the county's own website, which Diana also referenced, it states that average temperatures in Montana are expected to rise by 4.5 to 6 degrees Fahrenheit by the middle of the century, and the effects of this are already being felt. So it is Missoula County's stated objective to reduce its contribution to climate change, and I think this particular instance is an example where there's a direct conflict with that. Electronic waste is a great problem. The Federal Trade Commission reminds us that most computer equipment contains hazardous materials, they cannot go in a landfill, and the EPA recommends that you check with your local health and sanitation agencies for ways to dispose of electronics safely. And I believe at this time, our local facilities do not offer that service. We may take them to a business, but there's no guarantee of where actually that electronic waste is going. And last but not least, there are unacceptable noise limits in my area of Bonner, and I'm not going to speak further to that, because I know that many of my friends and neighbors are here today who can very well substantiate that concern. So until these are resolved, Gary and I respectfully ask that a moratorium on any future development of cryptocurrency facilities in Missoula County be established. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mattson.
Good afternoon. My name is Mike McGowan. I am CEO of DCM Limited, and I'm also an independent director on the Federal Home Loan Bank Board. I'm actively involved in blockchain. I just received a professional certification from the University of Oxford in blockchain. I would like to just offer a couple of comments with regard to the assumptions that are being made by the council. Number one, I see here that in the literature, it says cryptocurrency mining is a process of validating cryptocurrency transactions. And you don't get cryptocurrency transactions without getting blockchain transactions. They are one and the same. You have an open, public blockchain that transfers and what we call hashes, blockchain transactions and cryptocurrency transactions. So there is a distinct, I think, I don't know if I want to call it disconnect, but I just would like to offer that to the council, that you take that in consideration. Cryptocurrency is a very specified, especially blockchain. It's very energy-intensive, as many of you have said, but there's 1,200 other cryptocurrencies that are what we call alts or script currencies, that don't use that power. There's active measures going to reducing the amount of energy that's used to process not only cryptocurrencies, but also blockchain as well. I'm not in the cryptocurrency industry or business, I'm in the blockchain business. I have, we have a software, I'm a principal in a software company that is currently actively operating and developing on the blockchain. The blockchain is our future. I would dare to say that in three years, you will be utilizing blockchain for your records, maybe five, give or take. The reason why is it offers a pure binary, completely immutable, transparent record so that all of us can see what's happening. But that's happening today. This is not some pipe dream. IBM is utilizing that for global payments. It's using it to not only secure the payment, but to do it faster at a minimum of the cost. Walmart is utilizing that for food safety. They do that for guava fruit and others, so that when it's picked, it has a certain shelf life from a supply chain management to a shelf, and when it's unsafe, it's removed. These are real industry solutions that are happening now. And one of the reasons they are happening is because they have processing facilities like the one in Bonner, like the ones in other Missoula counties. And so we need those processing. Do we need to get better? Yes. Less consumption, certainly less noise. I think there's efforts there to certainly address all of those, but we have to have a chance to move there. You've got to give us a chance to continue to develop. Think about when we had the internet 25 years ago. All we had was email and a dial-up modem. That was loud and monochious and slow, but we've moved past that. Now it's seamless, and we have secure messaging and all those other things. So what I'm asking the council, or the commissioners to do is at least consider that, that young technology takes time. There is a distinct distinction between cryptocurrency and blockchain, and industry is using blockchain, and we need that currency, that current processing capacity. I'll end with this. Eighty percent of all crypto and blockchain processing in mining facilities are in China. We have a strategic position to maintain, and by not allowing that to move forward, I think would inhibit that. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McGowan. Additional public comment. Come on up.
Good afternoon, county commissioners. I'm Desiree Kissinger, and I'm eager to follow Mr. McGowan's comments regarding this issue. I kind of have a neat, unique perspective in this whole situation. I'm currently employed by Alter Enterprise, and I graduated Missoula College last semester with an associate's in network management. As part of the Missoula Colleges program, you're required to complete 90 hours of an internship program, which I completed with my current employer, Alter Enterprise. My very first day on the job, I was handed a cryptocurrency miner and told, "Here, fix this." So to clarify, I want everybody to be very clear that a cryptocurrency miner is no different than any other piece of hardware that I, as a computer technician, would work on. It has the same parts, the same processes, it is functionally the same as any computer that every single one of you have in your hands on a daily basis. At the current moment, it is being used to process cryptocurrency, but as Mr. McGowan pointed out, the potential for this technology to improve far beyond what we can even imagine is not a pipe dream, that is reality, it's just not here yet. When I had some time with these machines and I was able to become proficient at managing them and fixing them, and you have computers that need to continue to process data, you need somewhere to put them. So what I had for Phase Two, I like to call it, of my internship, was designing and creating a small test facility to be able to house these machines. Now, if you're familiar at all with a data center, there's so much that goes into a data center. You have everything from physical layout to air management to cooling systems, plumbing, electrical, the machines themselves, the networking of the machines themselves, and once you think you have it all put together, you have the maintenance of the machines themselves, which is ongoing all the time. Everything that went into this entire process was incredible, and I, as an intern, was able to do almost all of that by myself with a little bit of guidance from Ryan Alter. Now, as a full-time employee for Alter Enterprise, I manage the internship program. We have all of the interns that Ryan mentioned who have come through our program, and I am able to show them our facility and show them every single aspect of our facility, from the heating, the cooling, the management, the networking, software programming, hardware maintenance and troubleshooting, all of these things. And yes, at the moment, they're doing cryptocurrency, but the concepts that these interns are learning through our program, they will be able to take to a data center that anybody else could have anywhere else in the world and be able to apply these concepts. These concepts are solidifying their knowledge that they got from the Missoula College, but the Missoula College doesn't have the hardware resources to help concrete some of these concepts that they pick up. It's all book knowledge, until they come through our program and they're able to put these pieces together. And that is something that will support them, their entire IT career for the rest of their lives. So, like I said, yes, while we're doing this right now with cryptocurrency, it's, it's about the concepts that we're teaching these interns and the possibility of where this can go in the future. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Kissinger. And if folks, if you want to queue up, that's, that's fine, if, or you can try to beat each other to the draw, that's, that's okay, too.
Good afternoon, commissioners. Mr. Chairman, my name is Jim Howard. I'm the superintendent at Bonner School, and I'm not here to take a position one way or the other on the proposed regulation, but recent articles in the Missoulian have perhaps given a false impression of Bonner School's stance regarding the blockchain cryptocurrency activities taking place across Highway 200 from our building. A year ago, when the fan noise issue first gained some prominence, I was asked by a Missoulian reporter about the impact of the fan noise on students' education. I stated then that I understand the experience of those who live in the neighborhood is significantly different from that of those who come to Bonner School building for seven hours of the school day, and we empathize with their situation. But as I said a year ago, at that point, no student, teacher, or parent had expressed any concern or complaint about the noise coming from the blockchain plant. A year later, that fact remains. No student, parent, or educator at Bonner School has expressed any indication that the noise is negatively impacts, impacting students and their education. If, as Project Spokane claims, the pending installation of redesigned fan blades will cut the noise level in half, I expect that the negative impact of fan noise will continue to be a non-issue as far as the school is concerned. I recognize that's not the same experience if I lived across the street from it, but at the recent Bonner Milltown Community Council meeting, one got the sense that community members appreciate the good faith effort Spokane Industries has made to address the fan noise problem in a thorough and timely manner. Bonner School recognizes that along with the economic redevelopment of the Bonner Mill site will come certain amount of noise and activity. Bonner School has a rich connection to the history of the logging industry that took place there, and we stand to see a long-term future benefit from the economic growth generated in whatever new industries come to that location. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Howard. Come on up.
Hi. My name is Jason Vaughn. I'm currently the site manager at Project Spokane, and I'm speaking on behalf, just personally, as far as what our facility brings as far as jobs. I'm from Missoula. I graduated from the University of Montana Information Systems class, and I worked at managing the computer store here locally for 15 years. I have five kids, and I was not making a livable wage, even after 15 years. The last two years of my job, I made less than the previous 30 years. I was, I've been into cryptocurrency personally, myself, since 2014. Started out as just kind of a fun thing to do, but then as time went on, I learned more about blockchain, blockchain technology, the technology behind cryptocurrency, and saw what a difference it could make moving into the future. And I was offered a job at Project Spokane and quickly left the job of 15 years, where I'm making a livable wage now in a city that does not have a lot of livable wage jobs. It's been a huge opportunity to maybe come, basically be in the front seat of what I believe is the biggest technological advancement in, in our history right now. Blockchain technology, in my opinion, will be the future of everything that we do. All record-keeping will be done through it. Our, our company has high-paying wage jobs for the Missoula area. I hired one of my employees that used to work for me at the computer store onto us. He's, he's making a lot more money than he was before. So we don't have a huge number of jobs, but all businesses, in order to grow, need to expand. Expansion means job growth, and we're in an industry that pays better than most of your Missoula jobs. Like I said, I'm making more within six months than I was at a job for 15 years. So I think a lot of people think our industry doesn't have much to bring to the Missoula area, but I, I urge you to look further into that. I believe that it does.
Thank you, Mr. Vaughn. Additional public comment.
Good afternoon, commissioners. Mr. Chairman, my name is Mike Cashel. I'm the vice president of transmission for Northwestern Energy, and I'm here to speak to point number three, which is the effect on electric transmission and distribution systems. My comments are going to be primarily drawn from the response that I had in the Missoulian to a editorial. My response was published on April 21st, and the editorial that responded to was April 12th. So Northwestern Energy is regulated by two bodies, Montana Public Service Commission and also the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission. Those two bodies dictate the type of service that we provide to our customers from a rate standpoint and also from a reliability and customer standpoint. This particular application that we're talking about today, my perspective is coming from the transmission system. Our customer in Missoula County for transmission service is Project Spokane, and that customer takes service from us under the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission Open Access Transmission Tariff. We are required to provide transmission service to any eligible customer, and in the case of Project Spokane and other customers, we run studies, system impact studies and facility studies to determine the type of upgrades that may be necessary on our transmission system to provide service. In the case of Project Spokane and other customers, we require the project to fund the upgrades that are necessary so that that project is responsible for their upgrades. And we, we do that in order to try to make sure that the, the appropriate customers are paying for the appropriate service. With regard to Ms. Manetta's question regarding what about future capacity, that is a concern, and it should be probably a concern not only with cryptocurrency or that kind of operation, but any operation. We have difficulty planning for large loads that aren't kind of in our organic growth. And the reason for that is our load growth in the state has been relatively flat for quite some time. So our organic growth and what we expect for load growth is expected and calculated to be a certain percentage over time. So large loads are a little more difficult to deal with, but we can, we can plan for those if we're given the proper planning horizon. So what I would like to leave the commission with today is that we require customers like Project Spokane to, as we do other customers, to meet all the requirements under our Open Access Transmission Tariff so that they are funding the upgrades necessary for them. With information then about all of our customers, we plan our transmission and distribution systems accordingly into the future so that we can expand and upgrade our systems to provide for all of our customers. That does, over time, mean that we will be making upgrades to our system that will increase costs over time for everyone. But our system is set up to provide services to all of our customers over time, and that we build rates around providing services to all customers, and we treat all customers comparably. And thank you for the opportunity to provide comments.
Thank you, Mr. Cashel.
Yeah, hi there. My name is Bradley Layton. I'm a licensed professional engineer in the state of Montana. I want to thank Amy Sillenberg of Climate Smart Missoula for inviting me today, and it's a fantastic discussion. I first want to validate what Diana Manetta said. I think it was a very accurate presentation, and the concerns are valid. I sit on two international blockchain boards, one's being developed by the National Society of Professional Engineers, an insurance engineering blockchain, and to what other people have said, the blockchain's here, it's gonna, it's gonna stay. I also sit on Northwestern Energy's Electrical Transmission Advisory Council in my professional engineering capacity, and again, the, the electrical demands are accurate. I also have a nondisclosure... I also have a nondisclosure agreement as a licensed professional engineer with Project Spokane. We have a contract, we're working with another engineering company here in town to help with some of the engineering. I think we've learned that the fans were not engineered properly in the first place, and it sounds like those are being addressed to address the noise aspect. Another point, I have looked at the electricity bills, and I do know what the rates are. I'm not at liberty to disclose what they are. I also can state with accuracy that even though they are under contract with a 100% renewable resource, there's not a one-to-one matching. I'm sure as Northwestern Energy can validate. So there could be some fossil fuels that are, in fact, running the facility. The building itself is beautiful. It's fantastic seeing this old site. It's well-maintained, it's very clean inside. Obviously, you do have to wear ear protection when you're inside, and I know that's being taken care of. I've also worked with other miners in the Britter Route regarding the fire hazards. I believe that's not an issue there, although it could be with other smaller amateurs, if you will. Regarding the e-waste, one of my students from the Missoula College, I helped start a recycling technology program at Missoula College, and I do have a business, one of my students graduated a business, who is taking care of e-waste here in the valley. So, again, that's another business opportunity in my mind to deal with that in ecologically responsible way. And also, we have been approached by other out-of-state miners to help revitalize places like Harden. So my firm right now is working on a solution to bring that type of industry to help distressed communities like Harden where perhaps noise is not much of an issue. And also regarding the future, I think it's a perfect opportunity to involve integrated solutions. So taking the heat, the 20 megawatts of heat, and perhaps heating the Bonner School or something of that nature, taking that heat otherwise regarded as waste and doing something useful with it. So there are engineering opportunities there as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Layton. Additional comment?
Good afternoon. My name is Ryan Thompson. I'm a Bonner resident, and thanks for having us here today. First off, as a resident two miles away from the Project Spokane facility, my family and our property have been significantly and adversely affected by the cooling fan noise that emanates from the building. So we anxiously await the completion of the mitigation efforts that we understand are taking place there. That said, I'm also a proponent of policy that creates a vibrant place for business as well as for citizens and the enviable quality of life that we enjoy here in Missoula. So, as we've heard today, this is a very dynamic issue. There are many assets or many aspects to be considered. To that end, I would ask that the county entertain this temporary moratorium, maybe even look at it being shorter than a year, as you obviously have a ton of information to digest. There's a ton of experts that should be spoken to, and there's a ton of things to be considered in a technology that's very much in its infancy. And I don't think what we're talking about here is a moratorium on data centers. It's not a moratorium on blockchain technology. This is simply a moratorium on cryptocurrency as the technology stands currently. And I would ask the county take the time necessary to determine how best these policies and the future of this technology can work together in our community. So, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Mike Jarnovic from Pilsville, and I want to go on record as being in support of the interim zoning regulations. Montana has a sad legacy of bringing in corporations that see our great state as a short-term piggy bank to be plundered for mostly out-of-state interests with little regard for the local community. Let me name just a few of those corporate carpetbaggers. Andicotta Copper, Champion International, Stimson, W.R. Grace, Stone Container, White Pine and Sash, Ross Electric. Remember those guys? These companies fled Montana or the Missoula area, living behind a never-ending history of community abuse, pollution, and ill will. And now we have Bitcoin. We already have the aforementioned issue of appalling noise pollution from the cooling fans, but there are other issues as well. The massive, almost inconceivable consumption of electricity, which will only get worse with the expansion of Bitcoin operations. The disposal of video cards that Bitcoin operations burn through at a staggering rate. And let me also interject something I learned from my last 18 months in the Army as an intelligence analyst with the U.S. Special Operations Command. Bitcoin is very much a favored currency of the Islamic State and other jihadist organizations. Is this the type of operation we want in Missoula County? Again, I am appealing to the county commissioners to very carefully consider the impact of Bitcoin on our community and act accordingly. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, Commissioners. My name is Brian Fady. I am the Clean Energy Program Director at the Montana Environmental Information Center. And I just want to comment briefly on the electricity cost issue that's been discussed because there are real questions and concerns about the potential impacts of these energy-intensive facilities on electricity rates. For this reason, electric co-ops in the region have been passing moratoriums on these types of activities in order to make sure that electricity rates do not skyrocket and that residential and commercial customers aren't stuck paying for stranded assets. The Flathead Electric Cooperative was so concerned about this, they recently passed their own moratorium on new Bitcoin operations. In that moratorium, Flathead Electric Cooperative noted that their concerns included the significant power requirement of the potential load requests, the high-speed computers required to process Bitcoin transactions that run 24 hours a day, 365 days a year, using up capacity that Flathead Electric had already reserved for serving traditional growth levels. They also noted that the loads are mobile, very transient, and potentially cause stranded costs to other co-op members if they leave permanently, and that this rapid growth in electricity demand could ultimately pose a reliability and safety risk to cooperatives, the cooperatives' electric distribution system. And so to be prudent, Flathead Electric Co-op passed a temporary moratorium. Other parts of the country have been dealing with this issue as well. The New York region, which is a little bit similar to Montana in that they have a long history of hydroelectric dam electricity production, which has created low-cost electricity, and Bitcoin operators have been swarming there as well. So much so that the New York Public Service Commission recently took action and are protecting their customers by allowing their municipal utilities to charge these unique operators' specific rates. And I just want to quote from the chairman of the Commission there, John Rhodes. He said, "We must ensure business customers pay an appropriate price for the electricity that they use. This is especially true in a small community with finite amounts of low-cost power available. If we hadn't acted, existing residential and commercial customers in upstate communities served by municipal power authorities would see sharp increases in their utility bills." End quote. And the American Public Power Association, which represents co-ops around the country, particularly rural co-ops, had an article on their website on April 2nd of this year. They noted, quote, "The transitory nature of the currency phenomenon makes it difficult, if not all but impossible, to plan for a sustainable distribution system to handle a load that literally might be here one day and gone the next." End quote. Regardless of whether a Bitcoin company pays for the initial electric infrastructure upgrades, all customers will be paying for the operation and maintenance costs for that infrastructure going forward. And these are costs that wouldn't have been there if not for the cryptocurrency operations. So for example, if a new substation is built for cryptocurrency operations, they may pay for it upfront, but what if three years down the line, they pull up stakes and leave? There are operation and maintenance costs that will have to be borne by the customers that remain. On the electricity supply side...
And you're at about three minutes.
Oh, there we go. I'm at the end.
Okay.
What impacts will there be on rates if a sudden unplanned surge in electricity demand? Would this push Missoula Electric Cooperative customers into a higher rate class? That is a serious concern, and that has not been answered. So ultimately, the question is whether the miners are paying their fair share, and that this moratorium is needed to make sure that they are. And I encourage the Commission to support this temporary moratorium. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fady.
My name is Bob Massey. I just come to encourage the Commissioners to use caution in doing this kind of zoning. I think you're looking at an industry that is in its infancy, and we don't know what positive effects it might have other than the Bitcoin, the cyber currency applications. We know the blockchain technology is going to be used in a lot of different applications in the future, and I think if you spot-zone or technically just say, hey, we're not going to take these kinds of businesses because they use electricity, I think you could be making a mistake. Secondly, I think that in terms of the electricity consumption, it's my understanding that it's excess electricity produced at the Kerr Dam. Now, I think we all know that it's very difficult to store electricity. That's one of the problems with us having electric cars, which we will eventually have. But if you have excess electricity, there's no way to store it. So if you can generate some revenue off that excess electricity, it helps pay for the cost of the operation, thereby potentially reducing the cost to other users of that system. So I don't think there's all of negative effect on the use of electricity. It also seems to me that this zoning hearing is somewhat of a knee-jerk reaction to a noise problem. And noise, you know, is an issue. Depending on what it is, I think it can be harmful to certain people. I've been out by the plant myself. I don't have an interest in it, but there is a noise there. It's nothing like what it was when I used to drive by there in '56 and '07, going to Seeley Lake when they were running the sawmill full-time. It was a screaming noise, which would have, I think, a detrimental effect on individuals. But this company and the owners of the property there seem to be responsible corporate citizens. They're working on the problem. From reading articles, it seems like they've spent over $100,000 trying to solve the problem. I think we need to give them more time to find a solution to the noise problem, and I think that'll happen. The other thing is, this industry can be self-regulating. In other words, if the electricity costs get too high, it won't be profitable for them to operate. And so I think that, you know, in terms of regulating them through zoning and not allowing them to operate in the community is a mistake. And I just encourage the Commissioners to use restraint in enacting any emergency zoning or knee-jerk zoning. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Massey.
Let's see if I can get this right. Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Amy Sillenberg, and I'm the Executive Director of Climate Smart Missoula. So thanks for the opportunity to comment today. I'm here to lend my support to the BCC's proposed action to establish an interim cryptocurrency mining restriction zone. I think the county has really done an exemplary job looking into the issues and just beginning to look in to some of the challenges and issues with the growth of cryptocurrency. Given the concerns, hitting the pause button in order to further understand the potential short-term and long-lasting impacts is the prudent course of action. So really briefly, Climate Smart is a local nonprofit that works with myriad community partners, including local government, to reduce our carbon footprint. So we're working to reduce our overall energy use and to develop adaptation strategies to deal with the impacts of climate change. So given our work, I just want to speak to a few of the concerns that you folks have brought forward and other folks have mentioned today. And just to be clear, I'm speaking to the potential impacts across Missoula County. So this isn't about just one industry or one business at one location. It's not about the entire blockchain. It's really specific to this cryptocurrency that uses this excessive amounts of energy relative to other blockchain industries that we've heard today. But given our energy supply and our collective sustainability and climate goals, it really is a concern to look into. So e-waste, I would just mention that we need requirements for the disposal of e-waste that are mandatory, safe, and verifiable. Voluntary disposal of e-waste is not necessarily sufficient. Greenhouse gases, our community has goals to reach carbon neutrality so that we have, going forth, a livable planet. The excessive energy use of cryptocurrency challenges these goals, and this is legitimate to carefully consider. Electricity reliability and costs, I think you've heard from some experts that it either is or is maybe not a concern. I had some of the same concerns that were brought up here and that Brian Fady had about the growth, and if what we do with spare capacity that is now gone and we have no extra, those upgrades needed would actually have the potential to be rate-based or passed on to other customers. So I'm concerned about that. Missoula Electric Co-op customers are also potentially affected. And that's where this moratorium can really help us understand that by hopefully having an independent assessment and analysis that can look at what Northwestern Energy is providing, at what the other utilities are providing, and see if that squares with where we are today and where we might be in the future. So if our load does grow by over 50%, as some estimates suggest, it really seems that there is a possibility that folks will be impacted. The point that we don't know the ins and outs of this, and this proposed moratorium provides that time to understand grid and pricing impacts. So the insanely high energy demands of cryptocurrency may well be incompatible with our community and county goals of building a livable future for all. Perhaps the future for this industry as a whole is in renewables, but that needs to be established. Potentially, there could be clean energy requirements that would go a long way to alleviate some of our concerns about energy use and climate change impacts. So we do not curtail our overall energy use. We are headed to a place, to quote a famous client scientist, "A place that is incompatible with an organized global community and is likely to be beyond adaptation." So it's incumbent upon us to act prudently, and the county's ability to use this precautionary principle in this arena will serve our county residents well. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sillenberg.
Thanks so much for organizing this today. I'm Kaitlin Thompson. I live two miles up from the data center in Bonner. And first, I want to just commend Steve and the rest of Project Spokane for the actions that they're taking to make this noise pollution right. And I'm also a Bitcoin investor of some sort. But with that being said, the data centers had a dramatic negative impact on my life and the life of my family in the last year, year and a half. We no longer sleep with our windows open. We have an Airbnb property that we've had the renters comment on the noise. It's rare to enjoy a fire outside by the river anymore because the sound is so loud. I worry about our property values and wonder what it's going to do because I won't live with that sound, and at the same time, I'm afraid we won't be able to sell our home. So while I do think that there is a solution, I will say personally what the data center has done to me and my family has been pretty dramatic. And I also really worry about the health implications. We have a little boy who's two, and I have no idea what this sound is doing to him. So I hope that you guys do continue to research this and figure out the right steps forward. And I hope that the fan blade replacement helps as well.
Thank you, Ms. Thompson.
Thank you for having us. My name's Sean Cooper. I'm the President and CEO of a company called Hash the Planet. We are a cryptocurrency mining facility out of Washington, specifically in Shalane County, Wenatchee, Douglas County, and we have facilities in basically five counties in Washington State.
If you could pull that mic maybe just a little bit closer to you.
Yeah, there. Is that better?
Yep.
I'll lean down a little bit for you. So just to reiterate, you know, we own and operate five facilities in the central Washington. We employ 47 employees. When we started, and due to our facilities and operations, our electricians, our HVAC companies, accounting staff, et cetera, have actually been able to go out, companies have been able to go out and hire more staff, just based around our employment and our staffing for our facility. Our HVAC company was able to hire and buy five trucks and hire 15 people due to our facility growth, and then able to utilize that growth to expand their business, as well as our electrical companies, et cetera. The noise, I went by the Bonner site, and you know, the noise is definitely, you know, quite noisy, and I really feel for the people there. I understand that they're working on some remediation and issues to fix that, and there's definitely things to be done there. And I feel for the people there. And I feel that this whole meeting is kind of being brought on because of that. So hopefully, we can kind of separate the noise issue that's being fixed from this whole... cryptocurrency and blockchain discussion. Lastly, I just kind of wanted to talk about the way that in Washington State, some of these counties have alleviated some of the problems for the growth that they are experiencing. In Quincy, what they've done is they actually implemented some taxing on these facilities and data centers whereby, especially like, they really started it with Microsoft and Google and Intuit and such like that, whereby the monies that the counties were, these companies were paying went into the schools and then brought education to the counties to allow for the schooling, the people that were coming up from that locations to grow and become employed at places like Google, Facebook, and Microsoft due to the taxes that they were being charged from operating their facilities in those counties. So I see that, you know, a potential for an emerging market changing the way that the whole structure of your schooling and structures go. So I came here to, you know, put my support behind Project Spokane and the cryptocurrency market today. So thank you for your time.
Thank you.
My name is, excuse me, my name is Don Kimmett, and I just wanted to, to comment the fact that I appreciate the fact that the county commissioners are looking into this zoning regulation because I think the biggest problem is, is the possibility that it gets out of control. And the more that you can investigate potential problems in other areas or also potential benefits, the more that you can either put caps on things or control the, control the possibilities so that something doesn't get way out of control. And so I think, to me, it's that, it's the fact that it's expanding at such a tremendous rate, both with power and with other problem, potential problems that I see as the main, the main issue, and that the more that you can investigate what's happened in other areas, and the more that you can look into it, and helps protect the citizens, and also maybe, you know, continuous expansion, but just under a more controlled environment. And so that's all I really have to say is that I appreciate the fact that, that you're, that you will be looking into it more, and thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kimmett. Additional public comment.
Good afternoon. My name is Elaine Nagel. My family came to Bonner in the late 1800s. I've been there for almost 74 years. I have lived in that area, not moved from Missoula for a high-paying job or driven through the Bonner area. Right now, yes, the noise is horrible, but all I'm hearing from a majority of people here right now is, well, it creates jobs, it increases finances, it gives you more tax money. But at what expense to the people who have to put up with this? I really hope you research this and find out what it's really doing, not only to the residents, to the animals, to the tourist industry. We've even had floaters who won't bring people in and float the river anymore. Why? Because the people can't stand the noise. So please, consider the plight of the people and not the money. Thank you.
Thank you. Additional public comment. Come on up. Don't be shy.
Hello. My name is Jeff Moore. I'm a commercial real estate broker, and I originally co-listed the Stimson Lumber Mill with CB Richard Ellis out of Tacoma, Washington. And in 2002, or 2012, the mill was sold to Bonner Property Development, Steve Nelson and Mike Bean. I think they're here. Steve. So I've been in charge, I actually sold the property, and then I've been involved in the leasing of the property since that time. And in 2015, we had a meeting in the Missoula County Commissioners' Chambers. I think some of you were there. That meeting included the Missoula Economic Partnership, the Bonner Mill Owners, Project Spokane, and, and representatives from the county. That meeting was part of the process to approve their use of the site, the Bonner Mill Site, and to get, and to get the electrical permit to set up their infrastructure and computer servers. Those permits and approvals were received, and they started their operation. Northwestern Energy completed their studies, proving this use is not a burden on the grid, and executed their distribution agreement. Once all of this was done, and all the, all the approvals were received, a lease between Bonner Property Development, the landlord, and Project Spokane, the tenant, was executed after all the approvals that the county had put in front of them that they had to meet. Since that lease was signed, Project Spokane has provided high-tech, high-paying jobs, and they would like to bring more jobs to the site. It's not even fair to consider limiting their growth once we've already approved their existence there. And, and then if you think about all the millions of dollars that they spent out there on their business, to limit their growth at this point just is not right. It is absolutely unfair. I'm a shareholder in Missoula Economic Partnership. I'm a member of the Missoula Chamber of Commerce and the Missoula Downtown Association. The city of Missoula and, and Missoula County are both stakeholders in Missoula Economic Partnership. And this initiative to limit the zoning for, for blockchain and cryptocurrency opposes all of the state and the county's efforts to attract new business. High-tech business, high-paying jobs. I would hate to think that we acted on this without complete understanding of this industry. I don't completely understand it. I have no, I, I just barely know something about it because I've been involved in it. But we really need to have complete understanding for trying to limit a business from doing something that we've previously already approved as a county.
Mr. Moore, you're over three minutes.
Just one more thing. The blockchain is a new technology, and I not, do not feel that any of us know enough about it to prohibit the industry from our county. The list of respected companies that support this technology is staggering. Back in 1990, none of us understood what the internet was. With this issue, I feel we are back in 1990 again. We just don't know enough about it, and I think that it's completely unfair to stop something that you previously approved.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Additional public comment. Come on up.
Hi. My name is Lori Ginn, and I live in the Bonner community, and I just want to support you guys taking the time to look at the impact all of this has had on not only the Bonner community, but potentially Missoula County. And thank you to Project Spokane for trying to mitigate what's happening out there. But like the people who spoke before me, it has had a huge impact on our life out there, and we're trying to get some resolution to that, and we do appreciate that. But I think you're being very prudent in looking at this because, you know, we live every day, one of your concerns, the noise. So thank you for thinking about that and maybe considering this, and I am in support of that. I've got two letters from people who couldn't make it, so I'm not sure how you would like me to present these.
Thank you. Additional public comment. Is there anyone lurking behind the pillar? Okay, come on up here.
Everybody's been waiting for the attorney, so here you go. My name's Jamie Bowditch. I am legal counsel for Project Spokane. We have submitted written testimony, but I'd like to just elaborate on a few things, both in that testimony and some other additional comments that we have. I'll try to be brief, to be honest. I thought we'd be in the minority at this public comment hearing, and I think we're probably equal. But I want to be a little more precise in my comments. What I want to focus on is the interim zoning process. And I think what we have to remember here is that interim zoning is kind of a ready, fire, aim process. I mean, what happens in interim zoning is you come in, you stop something, and then you look into it. And so what we're asking Project Spokane to do is to basically agree to a situation where they stand down, make no future investment in their company, and wait for Missoula County to figure it out. And I don't think that's fair unless, as the circumstances and the statutes dictate, as established in the, by the 2013 legislature, that there is really an emergency. And I think what's lacking here is any definition or even any evidence at all of any emergency that requires the adoption of interim zoning. There are some things to look into. I, I understand that. I, I think we all recognize the concerns of the citizens. I think there's a lot of unknowns. I mean, even Project Spokane will sit there and say, "We don't know exactly where this is headed." But there's no emergency that justifies you, that justifies Missoula County from prohibiting future expansion of an existing business who's invested a substantial amount of money into their current operations based, as Mr. Moore said, on an approval that was obtained approximately three years ago. And so I want to address just a couple of things, but you know, staff has kind of addressed that already. You know, the, the fan sound issue has been a problem to some. It's irritating to some. We understand that, and Project Spokane has, and really within partnership with Bonner Property Development, has spent a substantial amount of time and money in trying to first figure out what is the problem. And, and I know it's taken much longer than the, the citizens of Bonner would like, but at the same time, to just throw a solution at a problem without identifying what's causing it would be, would cause nobody any benefit, and it would cost a lot of money. So they've identified what they believe to be the problem, to be the problem, and are now in the process of implementing that solution. In fact, the hope right now is, is that fans will be on-site within the next month or so, and what the, what Project Spokane intends to do is to start installing those, those replacement fan blades as quickly as possible with the sincere hope, based on the studies they commissioned, that it will significantly reduce and address the issues that are being caused out there currently. But, but as to the, so that's one issue, okay? So you've got the five issues that have been identified, and that issue is being addressed. There are four remaining issues that have been identified or impacts, and absolutely none of them are present with respect to the current operations. And I know we can sit there and say, well, what about cryptocurrency and mining operations throughout Missoula County? Maybe there's some underground operations that I don't know of, but the, the, the only large-scale commercial operation that exists in Missoula County outside city limits is Project Spokane. So this really almost feels like a shot at us and only us, and not at looking at stuff in general, especially when you try to adopt this through the interim zoning process.
Mr. Bowditch, you're about three and a half minutes.
Okay. I'll, I'll quickly finish. The greenhouse gases, we obtain our hydroelectric power. The electric, electrical system reliability has been addressed. The fire, we have one of the most advanced fire suppression systems out there. And really, there's really nothing out there to burn except for the wiring, for which professional engineers and contractors have installed it all. I, I, I guess I'll close with this. There's a lot of unknowns, and we need to investigate this. But the process for doing it is not to stop all future investment expansion at the expense of really almost exclusively my client while we try to figure this out, especially when you look at the circumstances where they are a responsible corporate citizen who are community, who are contributing significantly not only to the community, but to the tax base and to generating well-paying jobs in the Missoula community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bowditch. Additional comment.
Thank you. My name is Brian Dagel, and I'm coming here to speak, and I wasn't intending to get up in front of you folks, but a couple of things that I have absorbed while sitting here is I hear the words "challenges" and "issues," and I would just ask that, you know, folks, please also add the word "rewards," and I'll get, I'll come back to that word here just in a little bit. The noise, obviously, that is the huge concern here. Totally understand respect for the locals and for our types of businesses. Is there a solution? I absolutely will sit here and factually say yes, and here's why. How long has the stadium, railroad, I-90, and Rattlesnake been here? A long time. As we sit here and we all speak, there's a solution for the noise going up the Rattlesnake being installed with the wall. So there is a solution by all of us working together, communicating, but not getting narrow-minded and keep our minds open and come up with this solution. So back to some of the questions with the delay to not overreact in the knee-jerk or situation, there definitely, let's keep the communication going to come up with this solution. I firmly feel that. And I use that wall along the I-90 as just a prime example of that. It's been there for a long time. Rattlesnake residents have been upset with that noise, and we're coming up with the solution, and it's going to work out well. The economy, I'll speak to that. I personally know city employees that have been able to pay off school loans to reside and stay in Missoula area and take a job with the local, you know, governments here. But also, it's allowed them to extend their education at the university, so to help keep them here instead of transferring out of state. So I, and I absolutely know that for a fact personally of people. So I want to, you know, keep that in mind. Along with, you know, Alter Enterprise and Project Spokane, I myself can attest to the advantage and back to the rewards of blockchain, cryptocurrency, Bitcoin, however people want to refer it. I'm a guy that wears jeans and boots. I'm not out to impress anybody. I'm a hard worker. I left the telecom industry after 20-some years. I hike dogs. I got a dog hiking business. So I was introduced to, you know, building Bitcoin mining facilities less than a year ago and got a big education of the industry. But along with that, I was able to employ three, or three people that normally would have been laid off and collecting unemployment all winter to help me build and educate myself, formed a great relationship with Alter Enterprise, and got educated, and personally saw how these young kids were coming through their program and still staying here. I've met individuals that worked out at Project Spokane that, you know, didn't have a job, and they have now been able to reside in the area and make a good living.
You're about three and a half minutes, sir.
But for myself, talking about long-term, it's allowed guys like me to obtain land to provide possibly up to 200 homes for other people to come and telecommute here in Missoula. So there will be a long-term effect. It's not just a short-term reward. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further public comment? I see motion up. Okay.
I'm Lee Bridges. I had no intention of speaking at this, but I've heard too much to stay quiet about. Based on all the comments I've heard today, I understand that a few people can make a lot of money off of, off of this business, but I also see the impact it's having on a whole lot of residents out there. I've been attending the Bonner Community Council meetings, and I've been listening to the residences out there. It's a concern to me. First of all, I want to say I applaud you guys for putting in place the, this possibility of an interim zoning. I encourage that and support that, and I say that because I've been participating in this for the last six months, and in the last six months, as a union sheet metal worker, we get up on flat roofs all year long. last six months, as a union sheet metal worker, we get up on flat roofs all year long. But I understand that that was the excuse for them to, to not proceed as quickly as I felt that they could have. Based on my trade, I also mentioned how many people are going to, are they going to have on a crew to replace the, the fan blades that they have coming in, to do this in a, in a rabid manner and supply good-paying jobs. I know that's also a feature in here, good-paying jobs. We make great wages as union sheet metal workers. If you would hire us, we could get the job done. And whether you pay four people for a long period of time or if, or a lot of people for a short period of time, it's the same amount of money, but it gets the job faster, done faster. Because of the period of time I've seen this take, I think a one-year moratorium is appropriate because it's taking them that long to get the solutions to the problems they currently have in place before. I think that progress should be made in expanding. I'm sorry to be reacting. I'll stop my comments. There's more I can say. I'm, I'm just hearing a lot that isn't said, and I just wanted to get that out. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bridges.
Mr. Chairman, County Commissioners, for the record, my name is Chris Poyer. Um, I'm a believer in the technology of blockchain, but my support today really has very little to do with that fact. Uh, full disclosure, I'm from Helena, where late last year lawmakers spent a grueling legislative special session to resolve a state budget crisis. Many of you are painfully aware of how those state budget crises filter down to the local level as the state's forced to reduce support for infrastructure and other county programs. You know, as revenues from our natural resource industries decline, many Montanans are struggling to find opportunity. Uh, it's not lost on me that one of the largest crypto facilities in Missoula, it sounds like the only commercial facility, is located at an abandoned mill site, an industry that's seen significant decline in recent years. Cryptocurrency companies and the related technologies that support them hold major opportunities for the state and the county specifically. They not only provide a direct benefit in the form of economic, or in the form of jobs and economic growth and tax revenue, but they also create a market for Montana's vast energy resources. I've worked in the energy industry quite a bit, and I've sat through countless hearings and task forces and meetings talking about how we're going to market Montana's energy resources, how we're going to get them out to the West Coast, to those load centers, uh, to create economic growth here in the state. And here we have econo, vast loads, uh, your large electricity-consuming facilities that want to locate here in Montana. And as technology progresses, as energy storage technology progresses, there's going to be an opportunity for all forms of resources to provide power to these facilities, whether it's wind or solar or geothermal. Um, I'll defer to others in the room, uh, but I think that Montana does have a unique opportunity to attract these businesses and their related, uh, you know, supporting industries. Um, but as we've heard, this, this industry is really in its infancy, and, uh, the major developers and investors in this industry are just making decisions now about where they're going to locate their facilities and where they're going to do business. And I would just urge the county to consider the signal that a county-wide ban on cryptocurrency mining would send, not only a, about the county and, and folks' willingness to do business and invest here, uh, but also as Montana as a whole.
Thank you, Mr. Poyer.
Mr. Chairman, uh, County Commissioners, let's see if I can get this thing.
Yeah, ju-just the tip, Ben's, uh-
Oh, just the tip? Okay.
Okay, we'll add it to your tab. No.
Okay. Uh, my name's Steve Nelson, uh, 733 Anglers Bend Way. I am, uh, one of the owners. My partner, Mike Bame, is the other owner of, uh, the Bonner Mill Site. And, uh, most everything has been said, I think, but I just wanted to add a couple, or just throw out a couple of things. First of all, uh, Project Spokane, as, uh, Mr. Moore said, really did go through the whole process properly, and, uh, and our experience with them so far is they've done everything that they said they were going to do, and, and they've been first-class about it. Uh, just a couple of comments. Somebody commented earlier about, uh, gee, what if they leave? Well, Columbia Falls Aluminum left. That was 300 megawatts power. Stone Container left. I don't know, maybe 100 megawatts power. Stimson left. That was 35 megawatts power. Nobody was complaining then because somebody had to pick up that difference. There was a cost there that was no longer generated. So somebody had to pick that up. A couple of, uh, uh, things that I think, or that I've read about, the, uh, you talk about the, the use of electricity, and it's big. But one of the, one of the articles that I read says that, uh, the, uh, the, if you take all the appliances in the United States that are in the off position or the standby position, that is equal to the, uh, electrical use of, of the Bitcoin mining throughout the world. And, uh, I can get the, the information if you need it. Another thing that I, that I thought was interesting, it has nothing to do with Bitcoin mining, but it has to do with aluminum. And we have a trailer manufacturer out there that manufactures aluminum. I had no idea, but it takes 15 megawatts of power to create one ton of aluminum. I would hope that we wouldn't want to do a moratorium on aluminum manufacturing. So that's all I got to say. Thank you very much. Appreciate your time.
Thank you, Mr. Nelson. Additional public comment?
My name is Joanne Wymer. Um, on the tax bill, I'm Barbara, but, uh, I live out there at Bonner. And what I've been kind of hearing, I thought that this was about putting a temporary hold on expansion or continuing, not a permanent stop to it, is what's been said the last couple of times. We were told, we, that they hadn't even made a, a decision yet of whether they were going to expand. And now, obviously, they're very concerned about it. But the noise is bad. I know you keep, didn't want us to keep coming up here and repeating it, but it's just the same thing as they're saying about their good business and all the money it's making. The noise is bad. I don't, some people are not going to have, are going to have to move. Our values are going to go down. So it is affecting us that live there, and it's been brought into us. And the reference that it keeps, that it's the same as the mill is totally, totally wrong. I've lived out there since 1969 through all the mills. This is not the same kind of noise. And I hope that you consider at least investigating this, like you said, a moratorium. Just wait, talk about it, figure it out, and then pass us the finding. Thank you.
Thank you. Additional public comment? Yes?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, uh, for the record, my name is Dan Stivers. I'm the General Manager of Project Spokane. And most of what I had came to say today has already been said, so I, I scrapped that and was searching for some things that perhaps haven't been said that I think, uh, uh, could be of benefit today. They were briefly touched on by a couple gentlemen, but that would be what I would consider the long game for not only Bonner, but then Missoula County, but then also the state of Montana. You, this is an emerging technology. You know, if you asked me, "Are you in the Bitcoin mining business?" I might give you a shocking answer and say, "No, we're not. That's not our objective as a business." Our objective, we see something that is transforming the planet. We are at a point of where we were at the beginning of the internet, which someone else used that as a reference, which is great, in 1988 or 89. And that emerging technology is the ability to hold a ledger distributed in an immutable, non-changeable, non-hackable way all around the world. And to hold that ledger, you need computational power. So we're like a utility company. What Project Spokane does is we sell computational power to a network. Now, because this is emerging technology, we learn things along the way. We had no idea that the frequency of a fan was going to emit at 125 to 250 hertz, which is the same frequency ranges of a siren, and that's what creates the agitation for people. It took us a long time to figure out how to provide that. It, it's new. It's an emerging technology. This is like where the IBM PC was in 1988. We have an 8086 processor that's throwing out a few thousand or tens of thousands of, of instructions per second. In today's technology, it's throwing out billions, just your phone. I mean, you can, it's far more power than what they used to put the first astronaut on the moon. And so we are responding to these things. We are, uh, we have a solution to the noise, which is a completely separate issue. Now, if you look at what we are, we are a physical infrastructure provider to provide computational power. What I want you to think about is the long game. Until very recently, we were the largest provider of this in all of the Americas, and we located here in Bonner. And this is a planetary-changing technology. I want you to think about the long game. If you go start sending these types of signals out to the world, you are shutting yourselves off from an opportunity to participate in this game. To us, it's irrelevant if Bitcoin makes it long-term or doesn't. That's, we, we do Bitcoin because it's the best-paying client right now to pay for our computational processing that we provide. Tomorrow, if it's someone else, guess what? We'll be serving that. The play is being able to provide the, the computational power access to support the distributed ledgers, which, by the way, cryptocurrency is just one aspect of how you can use a ledger. You can use these ledgers for everything, and this is what you're seeing all business move towards. You can do personal identifications off of it. You can do titles. You can do, um, uh, birth certificates. You have entire small countries that are moving to blockchain technologies currently. You have all land areas that are being mapped out. This, as you see, over the next five to 10 years is where it's going to be. It's going to be explosive, and Montana has a unique capacity. We use clean power. We use hydropower. We're not committing greenhouse gases. This isn't China and Russia and, and Thailand that the articles that were posted about fire. We have regulations. This is America. We have complied to all of those. If you look at the four points of what's been published out there, none of them apply to what, uh, to what we are about or what we do. The, the information and the accuracy of it's just not factually appropriate to what we are and what Project Spokane is. So what I would love to do, and Project Spokane is, we looked at today as a very exciting potential of introducing the ability to begin a narrative to educate and allow people to understand what is the big deal with blockchain technology. If you hear blockchain, just think ledger. It's the exact same thing. It's just something that you can record any type of information in that can now be held in a trust protocol format. Math, the mathematics force the integrity of that ledger. It can't be hacked. It can't be changed. It's open. It's distributed, and that-
Mr. Stivers, you're running a little bit long.
Oh, thank you so much. I didn't know where it was. So I, I'm, that's it. So I'm wrapping up. So that, that was my comments, and thank you so much for today.
Thank, thank you for your comments.
Bye.
Is there additional public comment? Come on up.
Hello, Commissioners. Uh, my name's Ben Fitch-Fleishman. Um, I'm on the Missoula Development Authority Board, and so I know some of you through that. Um, I want to speak to you about a perspective from my former life as an economics professor. And I have to say that I've been really impressed with all the comments that people have put forth today. But I really want to echo what Mr. Stivers just said about the long game. I think that's really important. And so we're kind of having a debate as to whether or not a year moratorium is a signal that's going to kill the industry in Missoula, or whether it's a short-term fix. And I don't think any of us really know. A year's probably not, it's probably short, uh, in the long term, but who knows what that means. But I think that a key takeaway here is that there are these five, uh, elements, uh, concerns that the commission has identified. And a key insight from basic fundamental economics is that if you want to control a particular problem or particular externality, it's really important that the regulation be precisely tuned to the problem. So if noise is the issue, you should regulate noise. If greenhouse gas emissions are the issue, you should regulate greenhouse gas emissions, et cetera, down the list. And so I think part of the concern here is that regulating Bitcoin and what feels targeted at one particular facility is a very crude tool for what are some more precisely defined outcomes. And it may be that the county doesn't have the right tool because of its jurisdictional nature or who it is, but that doesn't mean, right, you, you don't, just because you don't have the right tool doesn't mean you use the tool that you do have. And so I, I just want to reiterate that the, the emphasis on the long game, I think, is really important. And it's, it's easy to affect the long game in unintended ways by using the tool you have because it's the tool you have. So I really applaud the, the efforts to think deeply about this. I think it's obviously a complicated issue, and people on all sides are speaking very intelligently about all the concerns. And so thi- this is something perhaps bigger than Missoula County as a jurisdiction, especially in terms of greenhouse gas emissions, energy prices, all that type of work. There are other agencies and other bodies that maybe the county can lead by leading the conversation and bringing these other agencies along or up to speed. But I just want to urge caution that, you know, if the, if the concern is noise, you don't necessarily need to regulate Bitcoin. You need to regulate noise, and et cetera, down the list. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fleishman.
Hello, um, I'm Dan Bordner. I own a small electric company here in town, born and raised in Missoula. Um, I don't know how to speak as intelligently as those guys, but I would just like to say I commend these, uh, developers in the efforts they're trying to fix the problem, which seems to be the noise, um, and the efforts they're going through, and the time that's needed to, uh, make those corrections. Um, I am the, uh, electrical contractor onsite for all the businesses. Um, I, you know, as my business, I, I like that, um, um, type of work. We don't have industry around here, you know, to, to get something, to develop the, the wiring infrastructure that, uh, Project Spokane needed. Um, it's something that none of, none of my guys, I mean, my crew is twice the size of us when I bought the company five years ago. Um, so that's, you know, fabulous for me. But on another note, the technology, I mean, I, electricity, that's what I do, but this technology, I've been doing it with these guys for a couple of years now. I don't, I don't hardly, you know, um, understand, you know, but a bit of it. But to have that opportunity to be part of it, um, in Missoula, you know, to, to, um, just, you know, something that's going to be around for, forever, the next, the next big thing, the whatever it may be, technology is the way it's going. We're going to be able to, well, some of us can, control our lights in our house by a cellphone, you know, and for that, you know, yeah, the cryptocurrency, like, like Dan said, is, is today. But the technology that's here and growing in Missoula, I think, is, is a great thing. Um, and, um, once again, I want to commend these guys for trying to fix what is the, the troublesome problem, I guess, i- is the noise. We just need time to fix that and, um, not limit the development of, uh, Missoula and surrounding areas. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Any additional public comment? Come on up.
My name's Deb Schmelz, and, um, I live in the Bonner area and feel like our life's greatly impacted by it, but I think enough people have talked about that, too. Um, the last few people have talked about, um, the message being sent out if you do enact an interim zoning regulation. And I agree that there's a message being sent out there, too, but I don't think it's necessarily the wrong one. I think that the message being sent is we're going to be careful. We're going to try to look at what can happen before it happens and then have to do something about it later. I think, um, the message is that we care about our environment and the way things look, and you can't bring a bunch of containers full of computers down and line our river with them like they did in Wenatchee. You know, I think, I think it's the right message, and I really encourage you to, to proceed with that. That's all. Thanks.
Thank you. Any additional comment at this time? Recognizing we are not making a decision today, and there will be more time for you to submit comments or be in contact with us. Okay, last call. Okay, um, with that, are there questions from the commission, or what is the commission's, uh, preference moving forward? We can certainly, um, while these folks who've stuck with us here this long today are in the room, we could certainly schedule a subsequent meeting where we will take this up again and deliberate in the interim, or... Commissioner Curtis?
Um, I don't, I don't know if we are ready to set a date, but, um, I think we do have the option of just recessing the hearing, too, instead of closing it if we want it to continue. I, I'd just like to thank folks for, uh, coming today and providing input. Um, I think that we all, um, you know, have similar things that we, we, we all understand that we don't understand. I think that's the key, that we don't really know all the impacts, and we don't know the future, and we don't know the long game. the future, and we don't know the long game. We're all appreciative that the noise issue is lined up to be fixed, so we're hopeful that works. So I'd just mostly like to thank folks for, you know, being good citizens and coming and giving us some input.
Yeah, and I would concur that recessing our public hearing would probably be the way to go. I did take the liberty to look at our collective schedules, and it may not be until about August 9th until the three of us are available, and there's room on an agenda to get this fit in. So that certainly would be an option to schedule it or not. Cola?
It might be good to give ourselves a definitive time limit in which to... Oh, well, it might be good to have a definitive time set just to have whatever education presented or outreach we want to do prior to that. If there are specific questions we need answered by then, I think it's always good to set a deadline. And I would very much like to thank everyone for coming. A lot of times, we have public hearings, and we don't hear any actual new information. And this has been fascinating, and I've heard a lot of new information. So I really appreciate people taking the time and offering their personal stories and professional perspectives on this. It's been very eye-opening, so thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. I thank everyone for taking the time out of their schedules today in order to... So August 9th would give us about a month and a half or a little bit more than that. It would also, by scheduling it, allow us to bring some closure at this point in our deliberations. Would we be okay? Okay. So I think the consensus is we will schedule the continuation of this public hearing for Thursday, August 9th, 2:00 PM, same location. Thank you all. And like I mentioned, you can feel free, if you either did not comment today and have not submitted public comment previously, to submit comment via email or in writing. We have one webpage on the county's website devoted to cryptocurrency, and there's a link there to submit comment. So thank you all. The hearing will be in recess.